Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Bible of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good Wednesday afternoon. Make sure this is on. I don't believe we had anyone signed up to address the board, Vicky. Thank you. I will move on to approval of the minutes of January 6, 2020. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
A motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That carries. Move on to the approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We have approved the agenda. I don't believe there are any new conflicts of interest presented. Move on to seven A through D, the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved. Now to the reports of the present. First, we have the HLC reaccreditation update report.
Good afternoon, President Mickelson and members of the board. My name is Fenicia Foster and I'm an associate dean of curriculum and instruction. And so one of my responsibilities is the institutional accreditation process. So I know I've been here a couple of times with some updates. I think we'll do this probably on a six-month basis as we get closer and closer to our official reaccreditation. So officially, as we've said before, we are on the open pathway. And so as far as the reaccreditation process that typically happens every 10 years, we did get 12 years out of our last one. There are five main pieces. The one's the assurance argument, the second's the quality initiative, then we'll have a federal compliance review, a student opinion survey, and then they have the site visit by peer reviewers. And regardless of where we're at in the pandemic, two years from now, they'll still be coming. Mitchell Tech had theirs last fall and they still did. It was somewhat virtual with one site visitor, but whatever it looks like, we'll still have it. It won't get put off. And so as far as our progress and timeline for getting ready for this visit, this past summer, we established criterion teams, and I'll speak more about them in a moment, and got co-chairs in place. We did find out that our official site visit will be April 17th and 18th in 2023. So we'll have a spring visit instead of a fall visit. It's a little bit more time. So this spring, our criterion teams will continue working and I'll, like I said, I'll share a little bit about what they're doing here in a moment. Down, that will happen over this next year as we come up with a draft of the assurance argument and then start some site visit prep. And then in the fall of '22 is when that federal compliance review will take place, the student opinion survey will go out, and then the actual visit will happen in spring of '23. So the assurance argument is what addresses the five core criteria or the five criteria that HLC establishes. And so we've established these five criterion teams and they have seven members on each team. And we appreciate Anand for serving on criterion two. And the purpose of these particular teams is to identify the strengths and the weaknesses of the core components and descriptors that make those up, to collect evidence, huge amount of evidence we need to collect and provide to HLC and then develop our outline for the argument. So to give you a better feel for what we're talking about with the criteria, President Griggs asked if I'd just spend a minute or so on each of the criteria to give you a better feel for what they are. So the first one focuses on mission. And so our mission needs to be clear and articulated publicly and it guides our operations. And so there's this civic engagement is one of the newer pieces of that and figuring out what that means and connecting to our mission. It's not a uniform definitions. It's always like, how does this look at your institution with respect to the guidance? So some of the evidence that we will provide or that we'll be looking for in that particular category is documentation of our mission development and regularly reviewing it. So that happens at the board level, at the tech council level, and some of those other areas. Orientation materials, lists of partnerships, how our campus is being used, as well as those public events. And so the criterion one team right now, so far, they've focused on getting our mission statement visible across campus because our name change last summer with the logo, we've redone those and those are going to be up soon and getting those around out in all the classrooms and all the common spaces as well. We're working on a civic engagement initiative to figure out what that looks like for us. And one of the pieces that we're hoping to pull off here in April is we're going to call it STC Day, but that will stand for Service to Community Day and seeing out how we can incorporate an academic type task, but how that really connects to the community. We're not really sure what that looks like yet, but there's some good models from some other schools. So we're hoping to make that a reality in April. And then the diversity coordinator position and initiative and what that looks like. And there's been a lot of conversation around that with administration as well as the foundation. So those are some of the main pieces there. For the second criterion, that's the one on the integrity, ethical and responsible conduct. So lots of focus there on the policies and procedures. This is where the governing board comes into play. So some of the role that you all play with Southeast will have to provide evidence and a narrative regarding that. Focuses on the academic freedom as well as the responsible acquisition, discovery and application of knowledge and how that all plays out in the classroom. So Dr. Valdez is actually chairing that particular criterion. And so where are some possible evidence there is our hiring qualifications and processes, our documentation of that, audit reports, all kinds of training handbook, policies and procedures, specifically making sure we have that academic integrity as well as grievance addressed. And so the current status there is they're looking at, we have a lot of these policies and procedures, but there needs to be some updates to them, both in content, also in name change and just making sure they're current and that we have everything addressed. And then a specific initiative there is we have an employee handbook, but needing a specific faculty handbook. And so there's a group of faculty that are working on putting that together. Three and four focus on teaching and learning. So the first one is the quality resources and support and especially focusing on how we deliver education. And so obviously that's changed a lot throughout the pandemic, but we were doing online courses before. So it's online hybrid, if it's in the classroom, if it's a dual credit. We do have our two new additional locations that have been approved now for Huron and the paramedic program, which is still in Sioux Falls. And making sure that, as well as, I think I might have forgot one there, but just making sure that there's the quality and that there's consistency across all those forms of delivery. Focuses on our faculty and staff, making sure that they are qualified and that our programs and student services are highly, are of high quality. So some of the pieces there would be the catalog syllabi, and we did bring on the concourse syllabi system that's helping get those in a more consistent format and the pieces are on there that need to be there. Looking at admissions requirements, program reviews, improvement plans, we've got minutes and agendas. And then especially, and there as well as with the programmatic accreditation. And we have, I'm definitely focused on that over the past few years, a few years. A lot of our health programs have that programmatic accreditation and exploring what that looks like in some additional areas as well. So currently, we are looking at some of those pathways, if it's dual credit and concurrent and what that might look like or, you know, how can the certificates lead to diplomas and into degrees? That transferability across institutions, we know we've always fought the board of regents a little bit more on transferability there and seeing how we can get some of our programs to line up and it just be a smoother process for students. On evaluation processes and procedures, so we have launched, we're piloting a process with faculty. We changed it up a little bit and seeing how that works as far as a more comprehensive evaluation. That's not just a classroom observation. And then looking at our share, our files folder structure is, evidence is hard to find if you don't know where to go get it or if it's, everyone's kind of doing their own thing. So looking at how we can get these particular pieces in an organized manner so that the evidence is available and that we can use it internally as needed. Four is on evaluation and improvement. So this is definitely about quality and the ongoing assessment of learning, focusing on the retention, persistence and completion rates. So this is, this is where the, definitely the assessment lens comes in on this particular criterion. Once again, here would be some evidence, always advisory board minutes, and we have those for each of our programs. Academic plans and reviews, all kinds of new program development and what that process looks like. We have to have evidence of that, just not, we thought it was a good idea, but definitely documentation along the way. Co-curriculars, there's another piece that we're looking at in terms, and that's, you know, in some institutions, that's like their athletics or that's their library or some of those. And so it's, we're trying to, but it really can be defined at your own institution. So that's another place we're looking at with career services and student government and some of those, those pieces that we have in place and seeing how that program really feeds into student learning. Also would be our enrollment management plan and student advising processes. So that particular committee has really focused on, we have a lot of data, we have a lot of information, but we, we need to use it to close the loop, not just collect it and have it, collect it and have it, but use that to inform our decisions moving forward. So that's definitely an opportunity that we're, we're focusing on there. And I'll talk a little bit more about a specific project in a moment. Across academics, about just over a year ago, we launched an initiative to develop an assessment, a program learning outcome assessment plan for each of the academic programs. So they have, depending on their diploma or degree, six to eight program learning outcomes and then identifying the specific measures where, you know, from the coursework that feeds into those outcomes. And we've brought on a platform called Watermark that is helping us look at that or collect that information, be consistent, and then look at it. So that data is actually starting to go into the system this, this now, right now, this semester. And we're excited to see how that will help us inform improvements moving forward. And then same thing they've determined here is just a consistent documentation strategy. Where are we going to have it? What's our documentation strategy in being consistent across campus? Then the fifth one is the institutional effectiveness, resources and planning. And so this, it's, there's a close tie to this one and the first one with the mission, but this is like, how do you carry out your mission? Not just, not what it is, what's it look like, where do you have it? But to making sure that your, your processes and your, your procedures and your policies and what you're actually doing is, is fulfilling your mission. So lots about the resource base here. So Rich has been diving into this one and leading us through some weekly sessions. And then that systematic and integrated planning is a key piece here. So lots of financial pieces here, but also on strategic planning, organizational chart, you know, the facilities and technology plan. We're looking at KPIs and dashboards. That would be some evidence that we'd need here. And that we need minutes that not just say what we did, but to really show that we reviewed and looked at data to inform what we're making, we're doing. And so the, the team there has determined that it would be helpful. We have a org chart, obviously, for the folks that we have at Southeast Tech, but we need a governing board org chart as well as far as where the school board fits in and where the board of tech head fits in and the tech council and those different pieces. And really spelling out what those roles and responsibilities look like so we know where approvals need to happen and where some decisions can be made. I'm documenting our use of data, you know, we do it, but how do we document it so we can show that we're doing it? And I mentioned Rich's Friday, mostly Friday budget sessions. And then I'm looking at what our internal dashboard indicators would be and what would be valuable there that can inform our decisions. So that's the status of where we're at with five. So these teams are meeting as it works best from there for them. Some are meeting a monthly, some are meeting weekly, and then every two weeks we're gathering, the co-chairs, as well as any other leadership team members are starting to meet on, on Thursdays to discuss the progress and share something that they found as a highlight and good piece of evidence as well as an opportunity that we need to focus on so we can have this ongoing conversation so that this process is meaningful like it's supposed to be and not just something we try to get done and check off. So that's on the assurance document side of things. Another piece of our review is the quality initiative project. And so I think it was a year ago that we put in our application for HLC's Assessment Academy and we were accepted and then it was delayed due to the pandemic. And so we actually got to launch this or start the training of it at the end of October. So we have seven people on this particular project team, but it will be campus-wide. I think it's great. We have our director of admissions, Mandy. We have three faculty members with Nick, Myra and Deborah. Ashley represents IT and Rich is from the business office, finance side of things, and then myself. And so we have a nice, an awesome team from, that represents across campus because the focus, what we've titled our project is advancing student learning. I really want that focus to understand that even if you're the bookstore, if you're admissions, if you're a financial A, like everybody's role is to support student learning and it's not just academics and coming at us from a team approach. And so this is a four-year project through HLC where we have to design a customized project that will improve learning through assessment, but thinking of assessment as that focus on, on student learning. So we're in the launch phase right now and we'll, we'll do our pilot phase starting in the fall and then it will continue on hopefully forever, but formally for two years after that. I know this graphic might be hard to see, but this is, thankfully, we have Nick Schneider on the team and he's our graphics guy so he can throw together some of this stuff for us. But our goal is, our project goal is to sustain an aligned assessment process that contributes to a culture of learning. And so the pieces that we've identified is a data management plan, like what data do we have? How are we going to use it? Really enhancing, we have a lot of current training and development, but let's enhance it and make it even more valuable and intentional. And then in spreading out those or I guess expanding, that's the word I wanted, the program assessment plans that we've started with academics. And then really having the system of communication that helps us communicate within our own departments, between departments, with our external partners so that we are, you know, having these conversations that lead to some value-added actions that are evidence-based. So we're, we're really excited about this. It's, we've done a soft launch with the campus, but really in that planning phase right now and hoping for more of a formal launch next fall. And I know you have the slides in, so those were just some of the more specific pieces that would, would happen inside of those. So as a recap with our assurance argument prepping for that, it's our criterion teams and the progress they're making there. Our quality initiative, we've got our Assessment Academy project. And then the federal compliance review, student opinion survey will happen in about a year and a half. And then that site visit will be about two years from now. So we're making progress, a lot of work ahead, but, but we're, we're not at the beginning. We're definitely in the midst of it. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Fenicia. I know, you know, taking over from Tracy and having to relearn where everything is even, you know, the data is even kept to figure out that when you're going through accreditation in and of itself is a big process. So thank you to your team and everyone here who's involved in this. I, I have no doubt that you guys will do great through your accreditation, but it is a great learning tool for you guys and it helps the organization to be, to be better at what they do. So thank you for listening. Thank you.
I was just going to add, it's, it's hard when you have a process that's this long to really keep people engaged and moving things forward. And so it's great to see the progress since the last time that you talked to us. And it's, it's interesting to see some of the ideas that you have for kind of current status and what might we do with this? And I think it's not about having the longest list of all the things that you can do, but it's about picking those one or two things that really are going to be impactful and make a difference long-term. And people can get behind that and people can really dig into that and make it meaningful, which is the overall goal. So I liked that it was, it was very succinct and I think you have, you have some really great ideas. And just plugging away, you know, to 2023 seems like forever ago or forever away. So just hang in there and, and keep working and really kind of try to appreciate that learning process. Because that's really, it's not about, like you said, the end result and being able to hand something in, but it's about what did you do along the way and what changed? And those cultural types of changes do take time. So as long as the people are invested and able to communicate that, I think it'll go really well.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to acknowledge the HLC reaccreditation update report?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Acknowledge that report.
Thanks, Rich.
Third day, I should just give up with technology.
You're doing better than I would.
President Mickelson, members of the board, Rich Clune, Vice President Finance. Just want to touch briefly on the second quarter financials and where we are winding up through the first half of the year. How does that lay against where we are going to finish out the fiscal year? Are we on track? And so just want to hit a couple of the, the highlights as we look at these reports that can make it so we can actually see it. So as we've talked multiple times before, we have four funds. The post-secondary fund is the primary educational component of it. That's the largest fund out there. Then we have three business-type activities or funds that take on activities similar to what you would see in a, in a private sector business. But as it relates to the post-secondary fund, a couple of points I want to make here. What I tend to like to look at is how are we tracking in line with our budget? So when you look at tuition and fees as a percentage of that overall budget, it is tracking very well, at least through December. So you see us at 49.75% of our budget, you know, right around that 50% range. That's going to back up. Spring enrollments down a little bit as compared to where we were last spring. That's going to have an impact as we go to achieve our budget goal in terms of our revenue. But there's a little bit of room there. So we'll see what summer comes. We'll see what the retention, what the melt is over the spring term. So there's a lot of moving parts to it. And when you look at those percentages, we're in a very good position heading into the second half of the year. When we look at our state support side of it, particularly state aid is always a projection as we go to develop that budget. That modeling seems to work fairly well and we're right on track with that. So we've seen our second quarter payment come in as they do the final calculations because it's based off of prior year tuition and that's coming in exactly where we had modeled it, you know, it's within $5,000. So not going to pick up any room there, but we're not falling behind in those areas. When we get into the federal support, those dollars are pretty well fixed. A lot of it's just reimbursement base. So we have done some of the drawdowns. That money's starting to come in. And you always have to remember that as you look at our revenue report here as I'm presenting it through December, there's always a month lag. So this is really reflecting five months of revenue at the post-secondary level, but it's just the way that we upload into the district's financial system. Get down and look on the expenditure side of things. Just a couple of things that jump off the page initially. And we, we did this, this was approved. We're going to be outpacing on the salary side a little bit ahead of where we would be at budget-wise, just because of that lump sum payment that we made at the end of November. If you recall, we, we took the insurance premium holiday, which the institute didn't make its contributions. We turned around and reinvested that and gave out some lump sum distributions to employees. So what we saved in terms of the health insurance premium that we'd had to pay equated pretty close to what we provided in lump sum payments to all of our full-time employees. So from an expenditure category, as we look at percentage, we're going to be a little bit ahead on the wages side of it, but you'll see some favorable variance as we get into the, the medical insurance. You see that's at 40% rather than where you would expect to see it at 50% this year. So it's kind of a trade-off, one for the other. We might be pacing a little bit ahead on the instructional costs. So we'll keep an eye on that as we go through the last half of the year. Sometimes that's a condition of your class offerings, what you have to present, what you have to put out there. But, you know, overall, when you look at it from a wage benefit standpoint, very good position. Nothing that is raising alarm at this point. When we look at some of the other categories, again, nothing really jumps off the page. You see some advantages that I think are somewhat related to the pandemic. So when you look at our travel line item, if you notice, $160,000 budgeted item. We spent $2,500 bucks here today. That makes sense with what's going on around us. So even though we have some potential declining revenue through our spring enrollment, we usually realize, the old days we used to call them efficiencies on the expenditure side of it. But I think we'll be, realize some favorable variances against what we have projected. So, you know, it's pretty early in the year to say where we're going to end up. But again, like I said, nothing's really jumping off the page. Food is another one of those examples because we're not gathering, we're not coming together as a community in the ways that we've done it in the past. We're seeing us not spend as much on the food side. You're going to hear me talk about that one, get to the food service part because that has an impact on that one as well. Other thing on this, bad debt. This came up as part of the audit this year too, is that we're going to have to look at how we model that. And we are again seeing some favorable results as a, being part of the Obligation Recovery Center. Our returns on students paying their bills as they start to look at that more consequential impact of not paying your bill over what our previous collection agents, we're starting to see this money come in. So why you see a credit there is we recognize it as a bad debt expense when we send it off to the collection agency. However, if that money comes in there, that's going to offset what we've done as a bad debt expense. So we continue to monitor that, I suspect, because of timing differences. When we look at the next month's report, there will be those fall charges that have now moved into that collections realm. So you'll see that shift from a credit balance probably into a positive or an expenditure balance, debit balance in there. But again, then that'll work its way back down. So if you're looking for things that we budget for as a way to have a favorable variance at the end of the year, I think bad debt's another area of where, yeah, we budgeted a $200,000 line item. I think we're going to look at the end of the year and see that we've got a favorable variance as it relates to that. Another major category that comes into play is really looking at our building improvements. And we talked about this before, you know, last year we ended better than where we thought. And really that was the timing difference with construction projects when they cross fiscal year. So we adjusted the budget and increased that. So we're on track with that. There's not any surprises with that. The Vet Tech project is winding down. There's a few minor things. At some point, Jeff will be bringing forward the final payment. There's still some punch list items and things of that nature we need to clean up. Another part of the differential there right now, again, has to do with the Terry Avenue extension. We won't be charged for that until the project's done. So that's really the last major thing that's outstanding on there to address the building improvements. So again, that's on track as well. So again, that's on track as well. As you look at the overall revenue, over/under expenses, again, remember, this is a timing thing. So it looks kind of bad right now, but you have to remember that there's a big influx of revenue coming in in January. So you'll see that start to bump up. So while we have six months of expenditures here, there's five months of revenue. And just because of the timing, the way our revenue comes. So as I look at the individual categories revenues-wise, we talked about our enrollment this spring and what's happening with that. That'll clearly have an impact on the attainment of our revenue streams. But all the other revenue categories are lining up as anticipated. Get in the expenditure side of things, no major surprises there. Posting was one category that kind of jumped off the page a little bit, but it's such a small dollar item. So it's just something we take a look at and, you know, are we doing more mailings? And hopefully there's a return on that. Could just be a timing difference as well. It's a little more front-loaded in those expenses. Questions about post-secondary fund? That's really our, you know, major fund, where the bulk of our dollars are moving through. And with anything revenue and expenditure related, it's really tied to enrollments. That's what drives the bus on this.
Will there be? I know that the school district is looking, there's a possible, you know, second round of funding coming. Will there be a second round of funding from the feds coming?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, there's some money built in here for that, kind of related to the first round. Excuse me, I'm dry mouth today for whatever reason.
Lots of talking.
Because I talk too much. But yeah, the the first round of it, we haven't drawn anything yet. But what we are going to seek reimbursement for is those ventilation improvements that we made. There's quite a bit of PP and E that we invested in upfront. We'll be able to draw that down. Those two sources in itself kind of are going to be reflective of the money that I built into the budget. So that's the round one. Now, what we're hearing as it relates to round two, and it's got a bunch of different, and there's CCR, SSA, or whatever it winds up being, is there's supposedly more flexibility with that. The other thing that we've heard in some of the discussions and a little bit of the research is the leftover dollars from the round one, which we have some, will roll over into the next round of it. And that expanded flexibility becomes available to us as well. So going back, we received 1.7 million, 1.77 million in round one. 885 had to go for student grants and aids. We distributed about 775,000 of that. What round two is requiring is is that a distribution to students of the round two money at the same as what your allocation was for round one. So we were required to distribute 885 to students. That's what we would need to do in round two is 885. The other side of it is the institutional share. It's not a dollar-for-dollar match. So there's many, many more dollars available on the institutional side. So it's what becomes eligible for it? Is there some lost revenue that we can make up? Is there some technology things that we can do in terms of our remote delivery? So we're we're still walking our way through that. The round one annual reporting was actually due Monday. They extended it to next Monday, but they were not going to distribute any funds until people had filed their annual report and had done their quarterly report. So we've done that. Now, the next thing is to see how we can put that into play and utilize those dollars. So it's not built into this budget other than that 400 or so that we identified when we when we first developed this budget. But those funds are coming. It provides us some opportunities, I think, to expand remote deliveries that are kind of consistent with what we've done in this pandemic. But it also has longer-term utilization, especially in some of these areas. When it's one thing to stand in front of this with a little camera. I know when we do our team meetings, I'm sure they're tired to see the top of my credenza just because of the way I sit in a chair. So hopefully, some of this technology makes that a more immersive experience and changes that delivery modality so people are more engaged and more active. So I think we're going to look to utilize some of the dollars for that. That was a long answer, I think, but hopefully I captured what you were after. On the enterprise funds, I just want to point out a couple of things. Bookstore, not a lot of surprises there. When you look year-to-year revenue, and we've talked about this multiple times, you see a decline there, but that was a shift in moving the laptops over into the post-secondary fund. Made sense, that's who's doing all the work is the staff assigned in the post-secondary fund bookstore really wasn't involved with it. We just happened to house them there. So that's reflective of that. Wages are a little bit ahead there, a couple of components to that. One, again, has to do with that lump sum payout. The second piece is some overtime that's reflected in there. We've been short-staffed on a part-time basis, had some turnover kind of right at the end of the year, so we've incurred some additional overtime costs. But you see that offset when you look down at the support other. You see that's only at 30% through the year. So other components in there was related to some costs associated with reconfiguring the bookstore. We utilized some of our rebate dollars. We didn't necessarily have a capital outlay to bring in the extra store fixtures. But there were some other things we had to do, some electrical work and some additional PCs to serve that. So, you know, bookstore is on track. It's it's where we would anticipate it that it would be. Now comes the enigma, the other two funds. Food service obviously has taken a confronted with some challenges. Part of that has to do with our modality when we're doing a a greater percentage in a hybrid format, when we're trying to limit occupancy loads and people on campus. We're seeing that impact in our food service. We're seeing some savings on the expenditure side of it. Obviously, we're changing that delivery in terms of our product offerings and trying to scale that back as best we can. The other thing that's hitting the book or the food service fund pretty hard is the lack of catering events. That was a big component of it in terms of our overall revenue streams, that those things just aren't happening to the level that they were. So a- as you look at it, you're seeing a $70,000 deficit when you look at the food service fund overall. Remember, there's a lag in the revenue here, which is going to help some of it. I also haven't recorded any of the transfer. We planned an $85,000 subsidy. I don't know if by the time we get to the end of the year, that's going to be enough if we're not going to jump over that a little bit, just in terms of what we're seeing for traffic on in the in the restaurant. But again, it's it's not like we're looking for a half-million-dollar influx. It's going to be in that $85,000 range. Childcare, you you're experiencing some of those same kinds of things. When it comes to the the modality of it, of our deliveries, the utilization of those services aren't what they've been in the past. We did get an influx. Kami applied for some state CRF funds and we were awarded, that's what that, $19,000 is related to that, where we could supplement some lost revenue. So that provided a lifeline for us. We're trying to see some savings since, obviously, we're not having the engagement with it. You see a little bit on the support side of it. She's trying to staff appropriately based on the needs. So you're seeing our part-time costs obviously be less. But overall, it is having an impact. And this is also a fund that's subsidized. You know, year-to-date, we're at a $13,000 deficit, which really isn't that bad. This fund is planned to be subsidized $39,000 this year. That's what we built in the budget. The other thing that I think we're going to have to come back and do a little bit later, and this came up as part of the audit, one of the corrective action plans they wanted is how are we going to address that shortfall and where it ended up FY '20? And the only solution is to transfer some cash in from the post-secondary fund into that. So at some point, I'll be bringing forward a supplemental transfer, probably about $50,000. But I'll kind of wait and see a little bit further down the year as to where we wind up, if we don't necessarily have to move everything. So that at a at a very high level is where we're at from a fiscal standpoint. Again, what's on the radar really is looking at enrollments. Everything is enrollment-driven, and that's always a challenge. So I think we're throwing everything we can at the wall to see what works, what sticks, what draws students in. Fenicia talked a little bit about that diversity person, is having a point person of that with the foundation and some of those partners in helping fund that position. Hopefully, there's a return as we look to engage that population in our options out here. Dual credit, I think we're seeing some issues with that. I I think that's clearly pandemic-related. So we'll see what the impact that has as we go forward, too. So hopefully, as we see our caseloads go down, people are going to start to want to reengage and and keep my fingers crossed that this fall is, my modeling, hopefully, will miss it the wrong way. I'll be overly conservative and I'll start to see some increases in the numbers. Like to throw a guarantee out there, but yeah.
I don't expect you to. Exactly. We can predict this.
You monitor it as best you can and you you try to anticipate and project as you can. Bob and I had a discussion today about our our spring enrollment numbers. You know, do you start trying to tap on the brakes a little bit? Do you start it? I think it's least an awareness of it. It's not, you know, the sky is falling. It's, we need to, you know, contract on everything. It's just be mindful of it, be aware of aware of it. We'll continue to monitor monitor the shrinks and the mels. Start to look as we go into fall numbers. What are those AARs generating? What's happening? You know, it's it's there. Obviously, I would just, what I'm trying to convey is that we're paying attention to it. Sometimes the chart's already been, or the course has already been charted on this, but we are still trying to pay attention to it. There's still time.
Well, thank you, Rich. And I know the dual credit, I know we're going to push on that as a school district as well, and with Jefferson opening next fall, I I really encourage you all to work with Dan Conrad and team counseling department there to really utilize both the dual credit. Maybe they'll come there for lunch and help with the food and and maybe childcare with staff without there, too, might help, too.
And we figure if you undersized your parking lot, that presents a potential revenue source.
Exactly. You might have to charge parking.
Jeff told me and he ensured me there was plenty parking.
Solve some parking passes.
But, you know, the reality of it is, is we've had discussions about that connectivity. We didn't build or plan for that street connectivity between Terry Avenue and our campus. We laid out where we think it'll be. That's a discussion as we go to build our '22 budget and say, if we see that connectivity, you know, we can't have them trudging through the snow across our field. So where do we go with that? Is it an important strategic plan that we look to get a return on? So do we build the street or do we at least build that connective pathway to draw, to make that easier for students to to transgress and and come into or regress and come over to our campus and provide that connectivity? Which then you start going, maybe we should do something between there and CTE, which is a much more expensive proposition. But it's a it's a starting point. And so I think that'll be great that we have that population out there, that connectivity with it. I hopefully see some food service benefits. Don't mean to take away from the federal program, but.
Well, with the juniors and seniors go off campus, there's not much out there. So that would be a perfect situation.
And we and we draw some traffic from New Tech High. So the fact that that population's going to grow five-fold, hopefully creates some opportunities for us as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for that?
If you have a cheeseburger, I'll drink it.
Part of the battle.
I I will make one special for you. That will make.
Sometimes I have an appointment downtown and so I just swing by.
Yeah.
Because it's close to grab a cheese.
I will even do curbside delivery just to make sure that that we deliver on that.
So I approve the budget. Thank you. I have a motion to approve or acknowledge the report on the quarter financials. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It's approved. Bob, did you have anything to add?
Good afternoon, President Mickelson. I do have a 45-minute speech, but I'm going to condense it down to a minute here. I did want to take this opportunity to say thank you to our faculty and staff. They picked up where they left off. Everybody has been working extremely hard, as you all are aware, I know, in terms of the staff spending extra time and in preparing the facility and getting it ready. And then, you know, I I think we've talked about this. I don't think anyone had their world turned upside down more than our faculty and our students, of course. And so our faculty have worked so hard and put in so much time in terms of, you know, trying to work their courses into a hybrid delivery, into an online delivery, when and where appropriate. And I thank Benjamin and the academic administrative leadership team has done an outstanding job juggling rooms. You know, I I hope we don't need to speak about a COVID cap after, you know, this spring semester. That that would be wonderful. And I also wanted to make a point to thank Fenicia. And thank you, President Mickelson, for mentioning, you know, and recognizing that Fenicia did step in in a very, very difficult spot with Tracy retiring in a critical, probably two of our more critical, mission-critical areas, institutional research and accreditation. And especially as you come up and approach an accreditation evaluation, a comprehensive accreditation, you need to have all of that, you know, working and going forward. And and Fenicia's done an outstanding job. If we could, I'd give her a standing round of applause. You know, Benjamin agrees with me. She's done a great job. It takes a champion. It's got to be a campus effort, but it takes a champion on campus to help spur and rally and pull together. And I think she's done an outstanding job, so I want to recognize that. And also thank Rich. If we had an early MVP, I think Rich would win for criterion five for all of the work he's been doing. That's a tough area. Those five different criteria, criteria four on assessment and five on planning are critical. And you're going to hear a lot of conversation and talk about those because that's what HLC is looking, that's where the scrutiny is. That's where a lot of institutions usually get some type of follow-up report, monitoring report and so forth. But I think we've got a great group working on it. So we'll keep we'll keep providing the updates and hopefully continue to make progress. So thank you with that.
Thank you very much. And we look forward and reach out to us if any legislative issues you want to update us. I know you just reached out on one, so keep us in the loop. And if we can do anything to help lobby any legislators or whatever, just let us know.
Yeah, thank you. That seems to be a moving target as well, so that's definitely the time of year.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.